President.
Trustee Paul.
Here.
Trustee Thompson.
Here.
Trustee Will.
Here.
Trustee Brooks.
President.
Mayor. Please stand by.
The flag of the United States of America is the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have any comments? None? No. Okay. Say what? Okay. E. New business, E. One day, a motion to ratify consensus vote for the agreement made between Deer Creek Golf Club and the Village Management Park for the maintenance of the University Park, golf grounds, grounds, is their motion.
So, second.
Moved by Louis, second by Lewis. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Uh, huh.
Question?
Ms. Scott, I mean, they come up with this plan, we have to let residents know what these different.
So, this is for, this is for a mighty project brought forth by K.O. now?
No. Uh, no. I mean. You're right. Rewind, rewind.
Six months back, six months back.
This is Deer Creek.
I gave it my best. Okay, this is for the Deer Creek Golf Maintenance. I reached out to several entities, including Glenwoodie Golf Course, Mayor Gardner of Glenwood, Kemper Sports, Cardinal Creek. There were about five different landscaping companies. I also had staff from Glenwoodie. Mayor Gardner was gracious enough to allow some of the supervisors to come over and vet landscaping companies. And they did not feel that they were able to handle the golf course. Ended up speaking with the owner of Deer Creek. He was the only one who agreed to allow us to not only use the staff but his equipment. So, he is over there now. They've been on every day. I've been at the golf course literally every single day over there. Yesterday, Saturday. They have been there from sunrise to sundown. The golf course looks amazing. I think it's in great condition. We still have a lot more work to do. There's, the ruffs are still a little high. So, it's the ruffs, the fairways, the greens, and the tees that they're doing making it some. Also, everything else that goes along with it as far as making sure that it's properly fertilized, that it's being manually watered, and all those things. So, that's going to continue to be in the golf season. We're not going to continue until December, obviously. But that is what this contract is for. And we don't have the equipment that we need. Like I said, we really need eight pieces of equipment. When staff, the supervisor Glenwoodie and Kemper Sports came over, they said we should need, we really need two of each, which is two for the fairways, two for the tees, two for the ruffs, and two for the greens. But right now, they are assisting us. They've been really gracious. They've hanged out off the price. Originally, the price was around eighty thousand dollars, it became seventy-six. So, I just want to say thank you to Jim, I mean, to Bill from Deer Creek for allowing us to be able to continue to stay open and run the golf course.
Talking about, maybe just to follow up, Mayor and Board of Trustees. I did take the opportunity after learning about the conditions of, well, put it this way, after hearing about the conditions of the golf course, I felt that, I felt it was responsible for at least a trustee to go up to the golf course and see what is it exactly that everyone's talking about. Now, I haven't swung a club since my surgery in '07. But I golf every day when I got out of the Texas. And I can tell you right now, I have pretty much hit all the golf courses. Our courses were worse than I've ever seen. It looked like a kid had took a nightclub and just hit it into the greens. It was horrible. The putting green that was out front was total, was horrible. I mean, it was totally embarrassing. And I'd be glad, because if I'm not mistaken, it's trustee Louis that we were talking about that deck. It was such refreshing to come back up there Saturday after I attended the funeral. I came up there and it looks like a PGA right now. It was a wedding at the same time. And so, I had snapped a couple of pictures just to, you know, in case it ever became a question. They perfectly, they even perfectly striped the fairways. So, if you're a golfer, you know what I'm saying? If you're a gardener, a lawn person, you know what I'm saying? It was perfectly striped. And two day, actually, that was on Saturday, Friday, I want to say, Friday or Thursday, whenever the trustees or someone went to the IML, one went to Washington, I decided to go there just to take a look to see if they were even moving. And they were moving in the rain. They were trying to get that grass where it should be. And I was just shocked by the time this would have been about like three o'clock on Saturday. It looked amazing. And I mean, I didn't even want to come off the golf course. I went behind the flag, shoot name, and I walked just to walk the course and see. So, I think that this, this is me just expressing a point. I can tell you prior to Chief Wilson and the rail drivers going to that golf course, we had equipment. But they go, they go, fellow trustees, you know what I'm talking about? There's pictures. There's pictures. For us to not have equipment, for that golf course to look the way it had, or the way it is, I'm just going to say two things and then I'm going to yield my time. Silvally, we need to go after that. Chief, never seen that ten thousand dollar lawn mower yet. So, I don't know what's going on. Ms. Scott, Chief, make sure you work on it. I don't know who that I will pick up the phone and call a lawyer or call that station attorney and send them a letter. And I have always CC'd the clerk to show I enjoy it. We need to recoup all that stuff. Because that golf course looked horrible prior to third of Saturday. And then to turn around and have a beautiful wedding, Karen's like, what, what? This the golf course? Yes, it is. And I am proud of the village manager and the two employees who put their heads together because revenue should be coming in. And I thank Deer Creek because they were reaching out prior to the election, asking to help us. They literally were begging to help us as a neighbor. And it's just unfortunate, looking, I know, ma'am, looking at seven o'clock. I just want to say just, when we do the right things and have the right people sitting behind each other, this can happen. And this was an executive decision that I liked by the village manager and the board of trustees. And also, for those who worried about the spending, trustee Volter made it clear, we didn't pay CHW, so that's part of the money that's coming from there. And with that, this is the matter of another time.
All right. Roll call, Madam Clerk. Trustee Louis.
Vote aye.
Trustee McFadden.
Vote aye.
Trustee Volter.
Vote aye.
Trustee Thompson.
Vote aye.
Trustee Will.
Vote aye.
Trustee Brooks.
Vote aye.
Mayor. I concur. Mayor. Vote aye. I, I, E. One day, motion to ratify the consensus vote for the restriking of the crosswalks on Black Hawk. Is there a motion?
So, second.
Moved by Louis, second by McFadden. Yes, questions? Madam, do you want to give us some skin, some rundown for the residents?
Trustee Volter wanted me to discuss this. So, this has to deal with the crosswalks on the long Black Hawk. So, we had, we had the same company that did Avenue Avenue. They did a phenomenal job in the striping. Come to find out, when I first got here, I told the first, the mayor brought up to me was the striping on Black Hawk. Because he said that I guess some of our over団 employees have did it, trying to do a good job and save money, but it was the wrong color and it was crooked. And then I ended up getting calls and complaints from residents saying that the crosswalks have never been restriked the entire time that they've lived here for over 20 years. And so, I thought it was a good idea to restrike it. I did put out for a consensus vote by email, but improper due before. Trustee Volter said, we need to go ahead and do this publicly. So, this is why this is on the agenda, so we can actually publicly vote on this. But this will entail university, so a long Black Hawk drive. It's going to be University Parkway, Boyd Terrace, Sandra Drive, and Lane, Sullivan Lane, and Hickok Avenue. So, they're going to be done in phases, not done all at once. But this is just basically just a vote to get this done.
Before winter time, correct?
Right before winter time. And it's really inexpensive because they did the other stuff for us. They were only charging us four hundred dollars for each intersection, which is a really good price, so.
Thank you. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk. Trustee Brooks. Question, wait, question. Trustee Thompson.
So, why would we be restriking when the streets need to be fixed first?
So, Black Hawk is not scheduled to be done for at least another year. Black Hawk is a, 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 a.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so as we give, so when you apply to your community development block grant, which is what people at the act, CDDG, you apply for it, for example, you would apply for it this year, but you wouldn't even get the money or be allocated the money until next year. So, we're always on like a different year funding cycle. So, we apply for it this year, we get it the following year, and typically, you do it so many months later. Usually, around this time is when we would be doing it. So, if we applied for it, which we did this year, we're anticipating that we're going to get it next year, just for a couple of portions of Black Hawk to be done, I think it's worth the eight hundred dollars that maybe save a child's life or create some kind of, you know, situation. So, that's, you know, that's the reason why we're going to do it. It's not going to be the entire stretch of Black Hawk, just certain portions of Black Hawk that are going to be resurfaced. And that's why I thought it would still be a good idea to just go ahead and get those portions done.
So, and then trustee Thompson and Brooks, I think that when resurfacing comes to do Black Hawk, it's going to start from University Parkway and then comes all the way down to Hickok. At south of Hickok, the streets are good, but from University Parkway down to Hickok, so we count the crosswalks, I think there's only two. There's the one on Boyd Terrace, and then there's one on Sandra and Black Hawk where the big dip is. And I think those are the only two outside of where it's picking to be resurfaced. And everything else is somewhere else.
And the other is an awkward problem. We just, we still have to pay a, what you call it, twenty percent, we have to pay.
Yeah, the matching, oh, well, that's not twenty percent, yeah. That's where the super collapse at, right?
Correct.
Because that's, that's a very bad hazard. Trustee Thompson. Okay. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Trustee Brooks.
Oh, finally, I laughed, yeah. I'm proud of Volta.
Trustee Will.
Vote aye.
Trustee Thompson.
Aye.
Trustee Volter.
No.
Trustee McFadden.
Vote aye.
Trustee Louis.
Vote aye.
Is there a motion for adjournment?
So, who?
Second? I mean, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? None.
Who is the second?
Louis. Louis. I'll take about five minutes recess and go on to our resident scheduled meeting. I guess we can't just get a mic. Trustee McFadden. Trustee, you know, what you're talking about. President. Trustee Thompson.
I think.
Trustee Will.
Yes.
Trustee Brooks.
President.
President, please stand by. Please, for those who want to hear the first meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion? I repeat, a couple of the minutes. Does anyone have a motion to table the minutes?
Right. I'll table this minute.
Yeah, set table.
Motion by Brooks, second by Louis. Roll call, Madam Clerk. Trustee Brooks.
Vote aye.
Trustee McFadden.
Vote aye.
Trustee Volter.
Vote aye.
Trustee Thompson.
Vote aye.
Trustee Brooks.
Vote aye.
Trustee Brooks.
Vote aye.
Vote aye, Madam Clerk. Our general public comments. Milton Morgan, please. Milton Morgan.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
There's some things going on. Didn't happen, didn't start happening until 2019. I live right over on Regal Farm Road, right over at Palmer Park since 2019. A bunch of, array of cars, trucks, vehicles, SUVs, what do you call it, big thing, a big Winnebago type thing, are partying up at the football field, which tears up. And I think Mr. Old Lady, Paul O'Lady, does a wonderful job in preparing the park, our grass with cutting it and also fertilizing it. It looks real wonderful. Well, when we have games, football games, and I love the kids, but the parents have got to learn to park on the street. But you know what? Here's a remedy. Here's a remedy. The remedy is so easy. Why don't the mayor and the village manager get together, find some money to go ahead with all that land out there? Build a parking lot. Build a parking lot out there so that parents don't have to, because here's what happens on a Sunday. They park all along, offset, both sides. You have buses coming back and forth through there. Also, all on Regal Farm Road and other streets. You have our streets crowded with our guests that come to watch and play games with their kids. You know, so the remedy is real easy. And that is just right there on that.
It's fair.
East, southeast street, or southeast side, go ahead and make a parking lot out there so that people don't have to travel so far, as far as walking. So, I'm really looking forward to that happening because it's inexcusable. Nobody could think of those things out of all the trustees that have been here and there.
It is, please.
You know, so I know y'all up there don't need to think. Another thing, I was heartbroken yesterday. I had my dog, Sizer, miniature Sizer, over by the pool, saw about seven kids come over and just ask former trustee Sonia Jenkins fell, all they said, the kids are going to go into the pool. I'm looking at you, mayor, because Ms. Scott don't know anything about it. I'm looking at you.
I, I.
You heard her talk about it. You've heard her concerns, and they're legitimate concerns. Well, these guys, after they captured my dog for her because she wouldn't come to, they went and crawled over the fence. There was two eleven, twelve-year-olds. There were some that was about six, seven. And, I don't even know what I. Six and, six and seven, that was sixty-seven-year-olds. And they watched it too. I videoed them.
So, I, I, I got you, sir. Even though your time is up, I respect what you're saying, and you're absolutely right because I think that the expansion, the school district getting ready to expand, you know, new field over there, there will be additional parking, parking spaces with the expansion of, at the junior high, so they're going to be expanding over, they're going to be able to.
The middle school. The middle school.
The middle school, yeah, absolutely.
We need our own. We don't, we're going to need to be paying, though.
We're not, we're not depending on that, but the more parking is good, that's good. I don't disagree with that at all.
So, right now, I'm talking about the children and how they find over the fence.
We're going to address that.
And when I, and when I asked them, why did you do it? I called them all over because I gave them a lecture.
What did they tell you?
They said they wanted to play in the water. They said, we're not the only ones. They said others come over there and go over the fence, squeeze through, and they said even the teenagers go over there. And you know, with, about a week ago, Public Works put a black screen, that black screen, and one person brought it to my attention, what if there's a child over there in the water?
Listen, I got you, but I got to stop. I mean, because I conceded your time, but we understand the importance of that. And I'm quite sure we'll address those issues because we're all concerned about the safety. So, that food does need.
No, you're not.
So, thank you. We're going to call up the next one. You conceded your time, I heard you, and we will address those things. I think that's not just my concern, I believe that's the whole board of trustees concerned about safety for our children, our community. We will address those issues. Thank you.
You know, I did, go ahead, trustee. In regards to what Milton was saying about the football game, and I did get residents, I have one, but he was very upset because he said too many cars and trucks are rolling in the grass and they're parked where they shouldn't be parked. And then they leave all the debris after they throw up, they leave tons of garbage, styrofoam containers, and they're not ordered, and that's unacceptable. Then the same issue that went on the same about the Kemper that's over there. And then Kemper had a hard time moving, the person driving it had a hard time moving it, wheels spinning, mud flying everywhere. And then this towing truck did come. I was, he was concerned whether that was the village paying for the towing truck, but I did speak to Chief Mitchell. He said, well, but you know, we got to do that because this is unacceptable. We want to have the football games, we want to have fun for the family, but at the same time, we have to have some water. So, he said, he is wiping tickets for those vehicles. There was a sign put up or somebody wrote a sign, but we got to somehow, because it's not fair for our place to look like that. But it's not, it's not fair that I have to call the police. They keep hopping their way, and then they have the civil police who's over there. I'm afraid that I'm going to start getting up.
Trustee Thompson.
I don't want to do that.
I am, ever since I've been on this board, I've been complaining about that food. That is a disaster, horrific disaster waiting. It's a great lackluster for our village and a terrible tragedy for some families. And so, I really would like to see that food covered with nice and nice fresh water. It's been done.
You know, trusty Thompson, with new, new, new stuff, chopping for the food, I mean, it wasn't mixed special. It was under like a thousand dollars.
I know it's dead, but you're right. You're there, it's just, it's a lifesaver, so.
I had a comment about the football, the field and Palmer Park, because I did speak to Chief Mitchell about that and addressed the issue about the cars running on grass. This is not just doing the games, it's also doing the practices as well. And that needs to be stopped. They're also now, they're parking on the walkway. I just go, I just, I avoided those children. So, they're parking on the walkway, and now we cannot go into walk, on the walkway because the cars.
That makes emergency.
Emergency vehicles now, as the game, the emergencies have to go through the grass to address any particular situation. So, he did put up a sign, one day I saw it, the next day I see somebody took a deck. But I still, I didn't sit tickets, but I'm just stating the fact that now I'm having to walk through the mud because the cars are taking the walkway now. So, I don't see where, why they should put one car on the walkway at all. This is just today. And I can say with probably around seven cars just on the walkway, but now kids, more or less, can actually walk on it. So, I think that's something that truly needs to be addressed, Chief, because it's just becoming outrageous. And then this past weekend, when it was muddy and rainy, they definitely shouldn't be parked on the grass because it tore, it tore up the grass. It's tearing it up. So, I mean, and it's not just University Park residents, it's the visiting.
It's whoever comes.
It's whoever comes. Once they see it, they probably, yes. Once they see it, they do it, and they don't pay their own ticket, right? So, if they see some one person do it, they think, oh, I can just blow them up and drive to the park. And I know they didn't do that in their own hands. So, I hope that we should really fix that problem because it's kind of just too much because I'm really having to walk through the grass and I shouldn't have to when we have walkways.
And that all affects that park, and that's what it is.
I also just want to say that when these offices are down, this, I don't know why they don't stop it because I think it was going down for four years, and this thing went on. So, I've been complaining about it, so when Tutu's down approaching, and they didn't even hear about it either, so police is there, so.
I agree. Did you sign any comments, public comments? Come, come up this man.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The mayor, trustees. Just want to make a couple of comments. The first comment I would like to make is that I have gone to several of the sessions with chat with the chief, and the last one last, last week, he just, it was a very informative discussion concerning scams, and he kind of directed it towards the senior citizens and such. He allowed time for questions and answers. As I stated, I've gone to a couple of other ones. So, I just wanted to thank the chief for chatting with the residents and something that I think that more residents should come out and attend. And thank you, chief, for chatting with the residents and sharing informative information. The next question I have, I just recently found out that we have a few Venezuelan immigrants here at the University Park. And if anybody can tell me, are they being directed here or are they coming on their own? Anybody know?
I think they're being directed here and dropped off here. They just pop up out of nowhere. And when they know this is how technical finishing right now, Maple Leaf is exactly full to the ground. This is the first time since I've been here that it has come to full capacity.
Well, well, I, I.
Should I ask you a question?
That's the, is this.
The building.
Okay. Yeah, 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 yeah.
The building owners have contracted the state and say that they ask we are able to take in those, accommodate for those migrants that come in. So, they work out the agreement, a product agreement that they receive six months of rent, and then they go through the next process. So, each building owner, property owner, has the right to say, we want to be a part of that program. And that's exactly what Maple Leaf and others are doing, saying they want to be a part of that program so that puts them on the list so when it comes up for availability for housing, they can reach out and ask them about it.
Okay.
And they're paying almost double what that dummy charged, correct? So, yeah, so they're getting like almost three thousand dollars per unit.
Who's monitoring?
They are.
Well, do you have a estimate as to how many people, immigrants we have in the village?
I have no idea, but I guess it's just like everybody else, we observe them now. So, what I can observe today is I was talking about the foundation dollar. You look at all the people getting off the school bus, it tells you right then and there that when they get off that school bus on Exchange Boulevard, the majority of those school bus children are not. It tells you right then and there that when they get off that school bus on Exchange Boulevard, the majority of those school bus children are not people that we are accustomed to seeing.
Well, my, my, my.
They have school system too.
And we're, we're, we have officially called ourselves for one of them in city, but they're just popping up because we don't run our own housing programs right now. So if a landlord decides to house them, or a mass property owner decides to, uh, house them and fight the property, they have to say so. And now that they're gonna have temporary work fees, I don't think it's gonna be a temporary work visa. I think now that we're creating an option, it's a permanent visa now. So they'll be permanent citizens and be able to also seek employment.
Did, uh, Mr. Moore, did, uh, uh, did you.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
The, the rest of my comment, me and you guys can, can come, you know, start discussing. Uh, I'm thinking that the village needs to be a little proactive in regards to this. When I say proactive, uh, I know that if they are not vetting people in Chicago that has all of, uh, the immigrants. Definitely University Park is not doing any vetting. Uh, we already have a policing shortage. And I am just suggesting that perhaps, uh, we could reach out to the Cook County, uh, Wilk County Sheriff's Department to possibly do some, um, policing in the area, and with me saying that, I don't know if that would be an additional cost to the University Park residents, um, because we don't know what type of people that are coming to University Park. Not saying that all people are bad people, but if they are not vetted, who do we supposedly have as our neighbors?
One more second, Mr. Moore. And so, chief, that goes back to our meetings that we had with them during that, that, uh, some things that was happening in Maple Leaf. Now maybe we can readdress them and ask them to, look at their private security again for their premises. Because at one time we were asking them to have private security on their premises, so now they have justification, and we can go back and knock on their door and ask them to look at giving their private security agency for their properties.
Yes, yes.
So that's what we'll do.
Well, that's good that you guys are thinking about this. Like I said, we have to be proactive about this because, uh, I think that just thinking that because people are being welcomed into University Park, have no problem with it. However, well, yeah, I do have a problem with it. Don't lie. I do have a problem with it because we have, um, homeless people. We have people that are low income, uh, and we have seniors. There are going to be a lot of services taken away from, uh, from those entities because we have other people. And I hope that if there are any, uh, Christmases coming up, and I know we're gonna be giving out coats and stuff a lot. Everybody need coats, but I hope that we look at home first before we venture out to other people. That's all.
All right. Thank you. Point well taken. I think we all share the same concerns. Thank, thank you so much, Mr. Moore. Uh, Simon Jenkins?
Yeah. Hi, how are you? Um, to make a comment off of Mrs. Board Trustees, hi, hi. Um, off of what Mrs. uh, Moore said, my question to the board is, what are we gonna do about safe passage for our children? And looking at that, because we don't know who's living here. I saw the bus drop them off. I was coming up Exchange and I was shocked. I couldn't believe my eyes. I'm seeing them everywhere, and I don't know if the village has put safe, our children's safety concerns. That is serious because they're talking on the news how they are, you know, they have criminal backgrounds, they haven't vetted these people. And we need to make sure that our children are safe. Now, speaking about the safety of our children, uh, Mrs. Morton walks her dog regularly over by, uh, Hickok Court. And what happened was she sent me a video of children climbing the fence. So I took it upon myself to go over there to see if water was still in this pool. Water is still in the pool, the pool is blacked out, which is a good thing. When you think about it, you thought it would deter the children from coming over there, but now they're really curious about what's on the other side of the, of the screen. So if one of them falls, hits their head, falls in the water and drops with us, that leaves us. If we put signs up about fireworks endangering the lives of our children, we need to address that pool. And I mean, I weigh about it, and I think about it. We're talking about a tarp. I talked about a tarp for four years and nothing was done. So I expect the tarp to be put on your foot, on your pool to make sure that our children are safe. Now we gotta make sure that the children are safe. We're pedophiles. We're looking at another problem too. So we need to get on a stick before something happens. And if something happens, I'm going to be on the news the first one pointing fingers on why we didn't do what we needed to do to ensure our children's safety.
It's been talked about.
It's been talked about too long. We have to stop doing this, lollybaggging about this. This is extremely, extremely important. Also, I would like to thank Mrs. Kelly Childrens for all of the hard work that she did during this, during our senior fair. It was just wonderful. The seniors got so many different vegetables, and it was just really nice. She puts a lot of time and effort into what she does. You have to give honor what honors do, and I appreciate everything she's done and brought to this community. Also, I would like to take the time to thank the village manager as well. We are technology sound. We are moving quickly into the future with our technology that we were lacking some years ago. So you have to support people when they're putting their first foot forward, and that's it. And you all have a wonderful evening, and I'll see you in two weeks in October. Thank you.
Thank you very much, trustee. All right. When we go back, concludes our public comments for tonight. We'll move right into unfinished business. Uh, item F one eight, this is a motion to approve Creo County President introduction, Mr. Bushel, relating to lighting project on Mrs. Sweet Light. Is there a motion?
Mayor, um, I want to tell you this because when you look in the packet, uh, that the general said, when we spoke at the board meeting, you said ten years for, uh, the project for payment, but in the package we had five years and seven years. What happens to the division of two years? Uh, I think the six percent was the, uh, interest rate.
You're right. So let's take that motion and take it. I will. Because I asked, I asked that DC company to reduce that interest rate, and I think when we reduce the interest rate, it, it kind of alters the term. So there's a motion on, trustee Willis. Motion by Lewis, second by Brooks, whoa, 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 whoa. To take, yes, ma'am. We'll come back and address that and get our actions done because we all want to like, we want to be responsible about how we get them. Trustee Willis, both sides. Trustee.
Both sides.
Trustee.
Both sides.
Trustee Thompson.
Both sides.
Trustee Williams.
Both sides.
Trustee Bruce.
Both sides.
Mayor. Both sides. Yeah, both sides, ma'am.
Yeah, whatever it is, if, if, if you speak into it, like, you can kind of hear you guys, but it's just one little.
Can I say that we all agree that we still operate with Flintstone Lee Woods instead of Jesse Woods? This has to go forward with this stuff. I've been preaching that. Okay. Thank you. So we got that motion table. We're gonna go to new business matter first. Thank you. Item F two A is a resolution appointing village manager as an authorized agent for I M R F. Is there a motion?
So who?
Who by Brooks?
Second by.
Second by Thompson.
And that, that.
And who called, Matty Burke?
What is the, uh, uh?
Illinois, Illinois, we just go with Tyra. Who called, Matty Burke?
Trustee Willis.
Both sides.
Trustee McFadden.
Both sides.
Trustee Ford.
Both sides.
Trustee Thompson.
Both sides.
Trustee Williams.
Both sides.
Trustee Bruce.
Both sides.
Mayor, repeat.
Both sides, Matty Burke.
Mr. Mayor, motion carried and has resolution R twenty, twenty-three dash thirty.
Item. Mrs. Morgan, please, you can't yell out now, we're just having a public comment section. So now, listen, we're not, we're not. Wait a minute, Mrs. Morgan, we're not gonna, I'm not gonna have a debate session with you. Talk to a trustee after we meet in Friday too. Item F two B, motion to approve, uh, Mark Group Development Project tip number seven. Is there a motion?
I might come onto the paper.
Second.
Motion to take about trustee Gina Lynn, second by trustee Brooks. Any particular reason, uh, okay. Who called, Matty Burke?
I can, I would like.
Both sides, Matty Burke. Trustee McFadden.
Both sides.
Trustee Ford.
Both sides.
Trustee Thompson.
Both sides.
Trustee Williams.
Both sides.
Trustee Bruce.
Both sides.
Mayor, repeat. Both sides, sir.
All right. Item F two C, motion to approve proposal for design, engineering, and construction services with Robinson Engineering for lead pipe replacement. Is there a motion?
So.
Move by.
So.
Move by the joint.
Thompson.
Who's the second?
I second.
Uh, Lewis. Who called, Matty Burke?
Trustee Bruce.
Both sides.
Trustee Williams.
Both sides.
Trustee Thompson.
Both sides.
Trustee Ford.
Both sides.
Trustee McFadden.
Both sides.
Trustee Williams.
Some sides.
Mayor, repeat.
Both sides. Item, oh, I think I missed it. Item F two D, motion to approve the government, uh, executive, executive, executive name. And the turnover will be presented in our paper.
So.
Move by Lewis, second by. Matty McFadden, questions? Who called, Matty Burke?
Trustee Williams. This is where the guy wanted to take the land.
Trustee Williams. Trustee Williams.
Always.
Both sides.
Trustee Williams.
Both sides.
Matty. Trustee McFadden.
Both sides.
Trustee Ford.
Both sides.
Trustee Thompson.
Both sides.
Trustee Williams.
Both sides.
Trustee Bruce.
Both sides.
Mayor, repeat.
Both sides, Matty Burke.
I am not going to sit up and do this. There is just a nonchalant meeting among yourselves. The order that I am trying to bring up, this is.
Mrs. Morgan, we are conducting business on behalf of the village.
I don't know, just a nonchalant. If you think more than that, then you stop above yourself.
We have a lot of the public section comment. I'm sorry, please. Please, don't be disruptive.
The only thing I'm saying is, tell us what you're talking about.
Mrs. Morgan, unfortunately, this isn't a venue for that right now.
You're so bad with anything.
These items were discussed at the county meeting, and that's what discussion was, that was the gentleman. I would not tolerate your continued outbursts.
Listen.
All right. Bills pay up. Attached to your approval is a listing of general operating expenses for the village of University Park that occurred on July twenty-sixth, twenty-three through September twenty-sixth of twenty-twenty-three. General fund four sixty-eight, eight thousand one and ten, road and bridge five thousand two eighty-seven oh four, town center fund eight thousand nineteen to forty-six. Capital project one six thousand five hundred and ninety to five, uh, four, uh, two thousand six thirty-six and twenty-five. Payroll fund eight thousand two hundred and fifty-eight with a total of four ninety-nine point three three. Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
So.
Move by Lewis?
Second.
Second by Brooks. Questions?
Um. I would die off. Yeah, I would die off. Um. Uh, this, this probably would be in reference to the back to school. Uh, and I, I believe I may not be the only trustee to have that question, that, of this question. Um, the back to school, these checks, I see some that were issued and then reissued, um.
Okay, true.
Uh, actually, it's, it's, it's actually a couple. If you're, if you're in the, where this, uh, where that part's in us, the, uh, agenda item. Like sixty-one, I'm on sixty-one if you're on your iPad. Some of the checks were reissued, and I'm assuming that why should it be sold?
I meant to buy that.
Yeah, I, I prefer to fill this page out. Like I said, I'm just opening the die off.
So, uh, when I have to put my name on the account, because my name wasn't on the accounts, when checks come in, it's something called positive pay. If the checks are manually printed out and you go to the bank to cash it, I actually have to approve it. The cutoff time is one P M. that day. So every morning when I come in, I review the positive pay and I approve or I decline, uh, the checks as they come. So I actually get to review them before where I didn't have that option. So I was unaware that the positive pay was going through, obviously, because I wasn't, I wasn't on the accounts. Um, so now I'm able to go on the accounts, but what had to happen was because they went there and no one put it in there as positive pay or wasn't approved. It was declined, and that's just a security measure. So we had to reissue those checks. So that's why that's. I, I got other questions though.
Oh, I, I use my time, okay.
Thank you, trustee. Trustee, unfortunately.
Um, I have a couple, um, questions. On the invoice, I see there's two green fields for the land safety or the lawn care. Two checks. What page do you mean? Or that's for, um. So, Ms. Erso, right, first one is on the first, I'm, I'm looking at this. So first page, you say green field, lawn care for five thousand, and then on the next page, you still have this green field, lawn care for five thousand. Is it two of them?
No, it's not two checks. I can, I can review that, but I know that, I'm trying to remember which page you're on.
Because it's two different check numbers.
I'm on page one.
On the first page, you got green field.
I see.
Check number one one zero seven seven one, and then it's another on the next page, one zero six four eight seven, for the next time or not.
Okay. I'll review that, that too, but I believe it's because he has separate contracts. Um, he has contracts for the fields, the baseball fields, he has contracts to, to the exterminating and the lawn care. So I believe there's two separate contracts, but I'll give that to.
Right, but I think the, the, the baseball field, they're, they're done, I think, just that one.
Yeah, but he wasn't paying, he wasn't paying twice for the same thing.
Okay, so it is two, two checks for five.
Yes.
Okay, so just to clear that one, one. Um, the next one is for Oesper fan bleachers.
Those are, so those are for the bleachers. Um, I had conversation with the baseball. Uh, it was Bernard Oesper, the third, I believe. Um, and he asked for, I mean, that's a.
How many times?
Move back.
That's football, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, football.
That's football.
Right, sorry. So I had a conversation with him. Some of the bleachers were damaged. Uh, when he requested some, you know, new bleachers, obviously it would come from the funding that some of the funding that's allocated. Uh, the bleachers go around ten thousand dollars. We were able to find some junk used. They're now, they've been put up and assembled by public works, and they were delivered, and they're in great condition. So that's what that cost us for, the replacement of the bleachers.
Who requested them? I don't know. No, that's just. Bernard, Bernard just supposed to.
Whoever, trustee Thompson.
So, um, I mean, a bay and, um. Okay, I got the question. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Sorry. Okay, so that's a question from the football organization to give some bleachers.
Yes, because they were told, you know, probably on, on, okay, on the ground.
Uh, next, I have, there's a, I have DJ services for back to school for the car shows. The price range is from two hundred and fifty dollars to a thousand dollars. Why is it such a big rank? Why can't it be to one that does the exact same service?
So I'm not sure, you know, that I know the DJ that employs for the, uh, for the car show, and that is for, that was for the summer, for those months that he had to perform. So that's why there's a, a larger amount of money.
Okay, so for the, I guess for the future, I think we should be looking at, I mean, because there's several DJ services. Contracts, like I said, ranging from two hundred and fifty to a thousand dollars. So if we can get it for two hundred and fifty dollars, then why are we paying a thousand dollars? So I'm saying it's set, but.
No, it was for several events. It wasn't just for one, the DJ for two fifty was for one event, right? The one hundred thousand was for five, it was for several events. It wasn't just for one. I can get you the exact amount, I'm gonna say it was four or five of the, of those events. And then the other thing is, we did request one of the DJs, but he wasn't able to make it because he had other issues. So we did have to call another DJ.
Okay, so, all right, invoice would show that it covered.
Yes. It would show the funds for the car show, yes.
Okay. Um, for check number one oh six four nine two, who is, what is funky rider for the car show? What is this, sir?
I can't even remember.
Good luck.
It is.
Is the vendor's funky rider on the, what is that?
Yeah, it's a vendor for the car show. I can't even remember because I can't.
We have the individuals.
I'm trying to, what is it?
But it did come across, I can't give you that information tomorrow. I don't have the right drawing. Yeah, it's one, he did something at the car show. I haven't written down the names. I can get you a detailed statement of what he performed.
Okay, well could you pull that until?
What page is it on, trustee? We saw it in my notes for the morning.
I got the check number, I can go, it's that one oh six four nine two. And I think it's two of them. And I'm, I'm not sure what page it is.
Okay, I, I saw that. I'm understanding that, so I'll leave you that information tomorrow, so.
Oh, yeah, I see. Same page, and it was a look, I think. It's, it's. Okay, and then another one is for check number one one zero six nine two, which is track club operations. What's this, Mr. Stone?
What page is that?
The way for names.
What is it?
That's the page.
You know, this is something else, it's a big issue.
What page is that?
One one zero six nine two. Compassion House Industries, track club operations, oh, that's the six thousand, that's bad. For that, okay, I got, yeah, you have to trust.
That's for, uh, the flight.
Yep, yep. Um, for one one zero seven four nine, which is bags group, there's two. One one zero seven four nine. Four bags. It's for the three thousand, what is this cover? Which time is this?
He has not got paid anything past the terms, so he can't cancel his contract, so this must be for August. His August payment, but I'll go check.
But it's on the big time, not about that.
Yeah, I think it was for July, obviously, it was a double payment, but I know he has him and Nina Bay have not been paid beyond, because I even marked it on the invoice.
So this is correct, sir?
Yes.
Just a very good. Um, and then also, one one zero seven five four, the car show rental stage, when do we start getting a stage?
We always have a stage. I know last year we had a stage.
What?
We have a year. It's that black, it's the stage with the black, uh, rough dust, or whatever, that always sits right outside the nine thousand, and I know that was there last year for sure.
Okay, um, for the back to school, who is the one one zero six five on Mario Hattman? And Ethel Reed is another one.
Ethel Reed was one of the performers, and also, I believe, Mario Hattman.
It's a performer, okay. Production guide, any one one zero six five, what a paper.
What page is that?
Uh, one one zero six five three.
I want to say, was that the production, uh, setup, the setup?
Okay, exactly. Okay, it's a stage.
It was a setup, it was a setup.
Okay. Okay, and then for the golf course rent to the debt, is that, what golf course? Is that all the golf course?
That's for all the golf courses, and that's just a standard agreement that the golf course has been doing for, forever. It's what I understand, I know it's, I have to go back like eight years, something like that for a long.
How many golf courses?
I believe it's twenty-five.
Um, next question for the back to schools. Keep that. I know that our attendants donate, what was the amount that was received?
I know that we paid roughly seven thousand dollars out of our bill, and the remaining amount was all donations, but I can reach that because I have that, actually, I reported for that.
Okay, so seven thousand is out of our.
Yeah, roughly seven thousand dollars.
Your request, sir.
Is there a motion?
So.
Move by.
Move by the joint.
Thompson.
Who's the second?
The second.
Uh, Lewis. Roll call, Madam Lewis.
Trustee Bruce.
Both sides.
Trustee Williams.
Both sides.
Trustee Towns.
Both sides.
Trustee Gooch.
Both sides.
Trustee McFadden.
Both sides.
Trustee Williams.
Both sides.
Mary P. B.
Both sides. Item, oh, I think I can use the state. Item F two B, motion to approve the government of Biden, J.B., expedite Nick James' nine months. And a turn forward will be presented in our bill.
So.
Move by Lewis.
What is this?
Madam McFadden, questions? Roll call, Madam Morgan.
This is where the guy wanted to take the land.
Trustee Bruce. Trustee Bruce.
I'll read them.
Both sides.
Trustee Bruce.
Both sides.
McFadden. Trustee McFadden.
Both sides.
Trustee Gooch.
Both sides.
Trustee Towns.
Both sides.
Trustee Williams.
Both sides.
Trustee Bruce.
Both sides.
Mary P. B.
Both sides, Madam Morgan.
I am not going to sit up and do this just to clarify the meaning among yourselves.
Not in order to try to bring up these specific things.
Mrs. Morgan, we are conducting business on behalf of the village.
I don't know, just to untap that. If these things weren't to tell us, these things come about themselves.
We have a lot of the public section comment.
Come on and leave.
I'm sorry, please. Please, don't be disruptive.
The only thing I'm saying is, tell us what you're talking about.
Mrs. Morgan, unfortunately, this isn't a venue for that right now.
You're so bad at anything.
These items were discussed at the county meeting, and that's what discussion was, that was the subject matter. I would not tolerate your continued outbursts.
Listen.
All right. Bills pay up. Attached to your approval is a listing of general operating expenses for the Village of University Park that occurred on July twenty-sixth, twenty-three through September twenty-sixth of twenty-twenty-three. General fund four sixty-eight, eight thirty-one, and ten, road and bridge five thousand two eighty-seven oh four, town center fund eight thousand nineteen to forty-six, capital project fund six thousand five hundred and ninety-nine to five, uh, four, uh, two thousand six thirty-six and twenty-five, payroll fund eight thousand one hundred and twenty-four and fifty-eight, with a total of four ninety-nine point three three three. Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
So.
Move by Lewis.
Second.
Second by Gooch. Questions?
Um. I'll read them. Yeah, I'll read the dialogue. Um. Uh, this, this probably would be in reference to the back to school. Uh, and I, I believe I may not be the only trustee to have that question, or that, or this question. Um, the back to school, these checks, I see some that were issued and then reissued. Um.
Okay, June.
Uh, actually, it's, it's, it's actually a couple. If you're, if you're in the, where this, uh, when that part's in us, the, uh, agenda item, like sixty-one, I'm on sixty-one if you're on your iPad. Some of the checks were reissued, and I'm assuming that why should it be sold?
I meant to point that very clear.
Yeah, I, I prefer to finish that, y'all. Like I said, I'm just opening the dialogue.
So, uh, when I have to put my name on the account, because my name wasn't on the accounts, when checks come in, it's something called positive pay. If the checks are manually printed out and you go to the bank to cash it, I actually have to approve it. The cutoff time is one P.M. that day, so every morning when I come in, I review the positive pay and I approve or I decline of the checks as they come. So I actually get to review them before where I didn't have that option. So I was unaware that the positive pay was going through, obviously, because I wasn't, I wasn't on the accounts. Um, so now I'm able to go on the accounts. But what had to happen was because they went there and no one put it in there as positive pay or wasn't approved, it was declined. And that's just a security measure, so we had to reissue those checks. So that's why that is. I got other questions though.
Oh, I, I use my time, okay.
Thank you, trustee. Trustee, unfortunate.
Um, I have a couple, um, questions. On the invoice, I see there's two green fields for the land safety or the lawn work. Two checks.
What page do you mean? Or that's for, um.
So, Mr. Arthur. Right, first one is on the first. I'm, I'm looking at this. So, first page, you say green field sound care for five thousand, and then on the next page, you still, this green field sound care for five thousand. Is it two of them?
No, it's not two checks. I can, I can review that, but I know that, I'm trying to remember which page you're on.
Because it's two different check numbers.
I'm on page one.
On the first page, you got green field.
I see.
Check number one one zero seven seven one, and then it's another on the next page, one zero six four eight seven, for the next time or not.
Okay. I'll review that, that you, but I believe it's because he has separate contracts. Um, he has contracts for the fields, the baseball fields, he has contracts to, to the exterminating and the lawn care. So I believe there's two separate contracts, but I'll give that to you.
Right, but I think the, the, the baseball field, they're, they're done, I guess, at that point.
Yeah, but he wasn't paid, and he wasn't paid twice for the same thing.
Okay, so it is two checks for five.
Yes.
Okay, so just to clear that only one. Um, the next one is for Oesper fan bleachers.
Those are, so those are for the bleachers. Um, I had conversation with the baseball. Uh, it was Bernard Oesper, the third, I believe. Um, and he asked for, I mean, that's a.
How many microphone?
Move back.
That's football, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, football.
That's football.
Right, sorry. So I had a conversation with him, some of the bleachers were damaged. Uh, when he requested some, you know, new bleachers, obviously, it would come from the funding that some of the funding that's allocated. Uh, the bleachers were around ten thousand dollars. We were able to find some gently used, they're now, they've been put up and assembled by public works and they were delivered, and they're in great condition. So that's what that cost us for, the replacement of the bleachers.
Who requested them? Last year? No, that's just. Bernard, Bernard just supposed to.
Whoever's, who's the example?
So, um, Nina Bay and, um. Okay, I got the question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Okay, so that's a question from the football organization to give some bleachers.
Yes, because they were told, you know, brought here on, on the ground.
Uh, next, I have, there's a, I have DJ services for back to school for the car shows. The price range is from two hundred and fifty dollars to a thousand dollars. Why is it such a big rank? Why can't we get to one that does the exact same service?
So I'm not sure, you know, that I know the back DJ been in place for the, uh, for the car show, and that is for, that was for the summer, for those months that he had to perform, so that's why there's a, a larger amount on there.
Okay, so for the, I guess for the future, I think we should be looking at, I mean, because there's several DJ services. Contracts, like I said, ranging from two hundred and fifty to a thousand dollars. So if we can get it for two hundred and fifty dollars, then why are we paying a thousand dollars? So I'm saying it's set, but.
No, it was for several events. It wasn't just for one, the DJ for two fifty was for one event, right? The one hundred thousand was for five, it was for several events. It wasn't just for one. I can get you the exact amount, I'm gonna say it was four or five of the, of those events. And then the other thing is, we did request one of the DJs, but he wasn't able to make it because he had other issues. So we did have to call another DJ.
Okay, so, all right, invoice would show that it covered.
Yes. It would show the funds for the car show, yes.
Okay. Um, for check number one oh six four nine two, who is, what is funky rider for the car show? What is this, sir?
I can't even remember.
Good luck.
It is.
Is the vendor's funky rider on the, what is that?
Yeah, it's a vendor for the car show. I can't even remember because I can't.
We have the individuals.
I'm trying to, what is it?
But it did come across, I can't give you that information tomorrow. I don't have the right drawing. Yeah, it's one, he did something at the car show. I haven't written down the names. I can get you a detailed statement of what he performed.
Okay, well could you pull that until?
What page is it on, trustee? We saw it in my notes for the morning.
I got the check number, I can go, it's that one oh six four nine two. And I think it's two of them. And I'm, I'm not sure what page it is.
Okay, I, I saw that. I'm understanding that, so I'll leave you that information tomorrow, so. Yeah, because I.
Oh, yeah, I see. Same page, and it was a look, I think. It's, it's. Okay, and then another one is for check number one one zero six nine two, which is track club operations. What's this, Mr. Stone?
What page is that?
The way for names.
What is it?
That's the page.
You know, this is something else, it's a big issue.
What page is that?
Um, one one zero six nine two. Compassion House Industries, track club operations. Oh, that's the six thousand, that's bad. For that, okay, I got, yeah, you have to trust.
That's for, uh, the flight.
Yep, yep. Um, for one one zero seven four nine, which is bags group, there's two. One one zero seven four nine. Four bags. It's for the three thousand, what is this cover? Which time is this?
He has not got paid anything past the terms, so he can't cancel his contract, so this must be for August. His August payment, but I'll go check.
But it's on the big time, not about that.
Yeah, I think it was for July, obviously, it was a double payment, but I know he has him and Nina Bay have not been paid beyond, because I even marked it on the invoice.
So this is correct, sir?
Yes.
Just a very good. Um, and then also, one one zero seven five four, the car show rental stage, when do we start getting a stage?
We always have a stage. I know last year we had a stage.
What?
We have a year. It's that black, it's the stage with the black, uh, rough dust, or whatever, that always sits right outside the nine thousand, and I know that was there last year for sure.
Okay, um, for the back to school, who is the one one zero six five on Mario Hattman? And Ethel Reed is another one.
Ethel Reed was one of the performers, and also, I believe, Mario Hattman.
It's a performer, okay. Production guide, any one one zero six five, what a paper.
What page is that?
Uh, one one zero six five three. You know, that's Mary.
I want to say, was that the production, uh, setup, the setup? Exactly, exactly. It was a setup.
Okay. Okay, and then for the golf course rent to the debt, is that, what golf course? Is that all the golf course?
That's for all the golf courses, and that's just a standard agreement that the golf course has been doing for, forever. It's what I understand, I know it's, I have to go back like eight years, something like that for a long. How many golf courses?
We need to know these things because, like I say, even though that room is full, I believe if more universal partner, where Rex, Mr. Hill has passed, uh, I, I think it would be even more full. Okay, um, because we're missing a lot of people that's leaving, especially the cancer. The next one, um, uh, this was by, uh, I do attend the community block club. Uh, their meetings are always on the first Saturday, uh, at the library. uh, at the library. Um, they're, they have many projects that they're trying to do as far as trying to improve University Park. So, um, I did, I'm the one to cut that grass up there, redevelop again. I'm trying to get ready for, uh, uh, mistrust and the, what they may do for the Halloween uh, up there at the farm. So, uh, that's Trustee Brooks, the little guy, you know, cutting the grass and clearing the land. Also, on Saturday, as I mentioned, I did take a, a trip up to the golf course. I think I expressed my concern about the equipment being missing, but I'm very happy of, uh, the two employees and our village manager of what they have done up there. It is running efficiently. I just wanna say the amount of money that we have missed out on. I tell you what, if I was the management company and I was catching the checks that he was getting from this village, I would say I would have made at least one point three million a year. Period. So the question I come out of my pocket is, or, no, not out of my pocket. The question should come out of their pocket, how much they owe us, you know? Um, I also attended, um, the Miller Chapel down here on the corner. They had a back to school, uh, uh, Reverend Collier, she had made it clear uh, that we need to try to involve because they had a back to school giveaway type of barbecue. But I explained to her, I said, Reverend Collier, you picked the wrong Saturday because one reason we don't see the mayor and the trustees is that you got, I had one trustee on the phone. And I said, I got one trustee on the phone in Washington, D C., the best of them down and, you know, downtown. I said, you picked the wrong day. But Miller Chapel wants us to come visit them, but they had a beautiful, uh, for those who did see because as you know, if you put it from the store, you know, you had the food giveaway and clothes for men. Uh, so, you know, we, we, you know, we need to pay a little attention to, you know, Miller Chapel as, uh, you know, as we part uh, our ways through University Park. Uh, then lastly, I just wanna give a happy birthday wish to two trustees, that's why they got flowers up here. Trustee McFadden and, and, and trustee, my brother, brother trustee Williams. And she's a worker and a fussy. And you know...
And a fighter.
And a fighter. So, you know, I just wanna say happy birthday. Yep, happy birthday to those ladies.
Happy birthday.
Yep, and you see them, you know, let them know because there's one thing I do know, um, I just turned fifty, but I know that, uh, my little fifteen year career, uh, I started. Some people keep saying, you know, when did you start? When did you turn fifty? When did you retire? I became a police officer at twenty one. I knew what I wanted to do. And now, when I look in the mirror of all the grays in my face, now I realize why I got in so many fights. Because I, how dare the sixteen year old guy in uniform with a gun tell me what to do? You know, I can see that or I can't believe you write me this ticket. But one thing I do know, um, and probably, uh, the police chief can relate to this, is that a lot, at least with us, is that our life is never promised. Because a lot of us, our average age is about, what, fifty five? Fifty five? So I'm not saying I'm gonna die in five years, but I take it, I take it, how do I say this? Tomorrow's never promised.
That's right.
So I'm glad to see these two ladies receive their flowers, um, because a lot of us, and one reason why I stay active is because a lot of my friends, even the junior who raised me, five years usually after police retire or stop working on the job we got. Don't ask us why. And when I say don't ask is because that's the truth. And the stress level that many of these guys are experiencing right now is sad. Uh, yeah, Reggie just retired and, and all of a sudden you, you lead this world. So, um, let's embrace, let's embrace every day because I know my day will come. When my day comes, I know the sacrifices are made for good. It's a shame even when the trustee mentioned the safety act, it does wonder me a little bit what's going on in Chicago that on the north side they're just terrorizing those people. But no matter how many police officers we hire, I think we're in a society right now that somebody... You need a block with Obama on it. For hope. I just spoke to a senator, uh, this weekend. And I told him that University Park can also use it as well as Chicago. Someone needs to step up. And we need to have that moment to understand that our brothers and sisters out here shooting each other is unnecessary. I seen one guy had eleven murders. He killed his own friends because he thought was coming to kill his own cousin because he thought his cousin would tell him for another murder. This is the world we live in now. And I had a very close person get caught with a gun. And they're going through hell right now in Cook County, and I'll say this in a minute time. They asked me, Trustee Brooks, what was it I can do? I gave him the resources and told him, this is the best you can do. But, but I told him was that times has changed. One reason why, after my second year of the job I went to juvenile, was because I seen it coming, our young man being put in jail. I would have detained a young man just standing there detained for two weeks. But after that, Detective Brooks would have been part of his home line to, the kid would have been assessed of any problems in the house. Most of my kids, I can tell you, out of my whole decade and a half, only lost two kids. That's all I lost. And I told you the story of one. But we, I... Detective Brooks stays as retired. So it takes all of us to do our job and wanting to keep our kids and reach out and make a change. And with that, considering, you know, we're, we're watching other news, I just had to get that off my chest. Uh, Mr. Mayor, you have my time, but took...
Yeah, you know, man, you're gonna make gun violence.
Yes, the gun violence, it's ridiculous.
Yeah, I ain't gonna go with that at all. Uh, Madam Clerk? Yes, I can give you your Madam Clerk.
First, I'd like to give those who stood in the middle of the family and my prayers and best wishes for recovery for his life. And it's in her acceptance of God's will. I know this has been a very, very difficult time for the Hills family. So we, as a community, should lift them up in prayers and not only them, but our neighbors might be suffering, let's start reaching out to each other and find out what's going on. I too attended the I M A L. And the sessions were fantastic, as always. There were updates on the, you know, those meeting act and the FOIA act. And there were some other sessions that I attended. But I also took the time to attend because I wanted to see how do the executive board for the Illinois Municipal League run its bills? So I attended the executive board meeting for the Illinois Municipal League. It was fantastic. And I just wanna say, we've got to keep pushing. When we get tired, if we think we're hanging that's tired, not and hang up because better days are ahead.
Talk to him, Madam Clerk. Talk to him. All right. Madam Clerk, Mr. Scott?
I'm there, too.
Okay, I got, I got, I got my ones for tonight, too. Chief?
He said he is.
Oh, he said he is, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Clerk, the board of the department heads, and, uh, our guests. Thank you, glad to be here. Uh, just got a few things. Uh, we attended, the, uh, police department attended the safety drill at Creekville Need Middle School when our, well, our children are well protected. Um, the teachers and the public safety and security there are trained professionals and they're doing a good job. Uh, conducted a chapter chief at Faith Newbridge Church, spoke with scams, spoke about scams, but particularly with seniors. Uh, I have a bunch of handouts. Anybody wants to see me afterwards, I'll make sure you get the information. Uh, we're currently conducting background investigations on prospective employees. Uh, attended training on the pretrial fairness act. Pretrial fairness act, um, it was, it started uh, September eighteen, Monday, September eighteen. Cash was paid. Uh, and, and, uh, anybody want to ask me questions about it, um, I'd be more than willing to, uh, talk with you about it. Uh, we've increased the tempo of in-service training for the P D. Um, we participated in the high traffic control twenty twenty-three fun run. Uh, some of you all may have heard about it. There were no incidents or accidents. The mayor, um, ran the, uh, the mayor and the trustee Lewis. They ran the entire I K.
The whole Friday K?
They ran the entire I K.
Seven seconds.
Uh, we were assisted in, uh, traffic control with public works. They did a very good job. They helped static post. I wanna, uh, talk to everybody about, uh, last week, uh, everyone received, or a lot of people received the reverse nine one one notification that was sent out in error by our communications center, Larry Wade. It was actually meant for Bolonbrook. Uh, we do not know how that happened, however. Once I was worried about that, I contacted Larry Wade and, uh, they investigated, tried to figure out why it was sent. Uh, some of you all may have seen what happened in Bolonbrook. There was, uh, it was a pretty bad situation where some people were shot. And somehow it gets sent to University Park instead of Larry Wade. Uh, we'll continue to work with D P W. We maintain the physical plant. And this is, um, talking about the, uh, uh, the migrants that moved in. Yesterday, I met with the Spanish Center for Will County Regarding Support Assistance for the migrants and their families located in U P. This has been a situation that, uh, we've been trying to, uh, get our, uh, get our head around for the past month or so. Uh, we reached out, the police department reached out to Illinois Department, uh, Illinois Department of Public Health, uh, Will County Health Department, our archdiocese of, uh, Joliet, which covers U P, Salvation Army, United Way, Guardian Angels, um, and, uh, state representative, Chatty Haas. The state got money from the feds. The feds took the money to the state. The state sent all the money to all these different entities. All of their focus is towards the city. That's where all their money is going. I sent out letters, emails, phone calls. I showed up at a couple of front doors and I was told that all of their efforts and all their resources are going towards the city. Anytime, uh, some of these families are migrants that need help, we've been instructed to get them to the city. And so, um, that's literally what it is. Uh, so far, the Spanish Center for Will County, they actually came out yesterday and they assessed the situation. They pledged to help us, uh, address this matter. Um, I've already been in talks, uh, for the past month or so with Will County, uh, to see what, um, our partnership with them, try to figure out what's going on. Uh, I've been in talks with a couple of, uh, high ranking officials with Chicago Police Department to find out what they know. You know, are they being, are the migrants being shipped out here or are they just making it on their way? Uh, some families have shown up at the police station in very dire situations, very dire straits. And so we try to provide them all the support that we can. Um, so I also attended, um, a symposium with Cook County State's Attorney, dealing with squatters. Squatters, that's just a thing that's happening. And so we're trying to deal with it. Uh, I wanna put a shameless plug out here for the police department. We're gonna be coming up with a shop with a cop December sixteen, twenty twenty-three. We're asking anybody in the village to donate gift cards. We want to, you know, there's some families here with, uh, young children that have very modest purses. And so we would like to take them shopping. They go shopping with the police department. We're asking for gift cards. That way it's a, uh, we're able to track the money spent. The more money we get, we get, the more children we'll be able to take. The school district will be picking the children for us. Uh, the police department, the village won't be doing it, the school district will because the school district has the families' financials and they will pick, uh, the children for them. Uh, this is something that's supported through South suburban chiefs of police. It's on our website. And so we're asking, you know, every little bit counts, you know, twenty dollar gift card here, twenty five dollar gift card there. Before you know it, it, it adds up. And so we would like to, uh, get as close to three thousand dollars as we can. Police department, uh, so far in September, has answered five hundred sixty-one calls for service, seven shops bought, all zero, uh, uh, fireworks cars. And so also, Police Department applied for a JAG grant. Fingers crossed we can get it.
All right.
That ends my report.
Thanks. Thank you so much, Chief. Chief Eels.
You said a grant.
Yeah, JAG grant.
JAG.
Justice Assistance Grant through the Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Services.
Chief, Chief Eels. Okay, we'll try to check your name before we put it in the book. I want you to look before I can.
Okay, good evening, everyone, Mayor, trustees.
Chief, you gotta leave the outside because it's not picking up.
Oh. All right. So for the month of August, twenty twenty-three, Fire Department responded to two hundred and four calls for emergency services. One hundred and fifty-four were emergency medical, thirty-eight fire incidents, and twelve vehicle accidents. That pushes us to, at the end of August, one thousand five hundred eight responses so far for the year. Fire Prevention has been busy performing all types of inspections in the industrial park. Anywhere from hyperstatic testing of fire sprinkler systems, just random light safety checks, sprinkler repair oversight that took place, this unit along with the two next to it, which has been completed. There were eight initial inspections done for business license approval. And we're still following up on two more that have to be re-inspected. Fire Prevention is not requested by code enforcement to handle any residential inspections for them. And we still have ongoing work at a number of places that are doing renovations, expansions, expanding parking lots. There's a lot of, a lot of activity almost anywhere you look in the industrial park today. On top of what we know is probably going to come our way very shortly. Code enforcement for August completed seventeen initial point-of-sale inspections along with eight re-inspects. Six more initial inspections were done on residential rented properties. Let's see, we're doing almost twenty different inspection types done in multifamily partner buildings at Maple Leaf, former house in Dynasty. Dollar General, new construction inspections on the HVAC system. And the final inspection for the business license itself, which is not yet approved. Until they straighten out their, their permanent power issues with Commonwealth Edison. More business license inspections were done on the code enforcement side along with nineteen building permit inspections and twenty-nine plan reviews. And last thing is there was two formal complaints handled in the one thousand block of Samson for garbage cans left at the current product a little bit too long. So that's it for my department for August.
Thank you, Chief. Madam Court. We're finishing with the public section right now. I'm going to just address the board.
Good evening. I'd like to give my report. One of the things I one of the things I wanted to state was on August thirtieth, I was invited by Fred Ward Alderman, Desmond Nancy, who I went to his high school with, supporting him. He was brave enough to actually have a meeting in the city of Chicago regarding the migrants that are coming into his ward. Of course, he was attacked and that with a lot of things that are understandable about regarding safety and things of that nature. While I was there, I actually made a contact with the newly-elected Police District Councilor in one of the communities on the south side of Chicago. She put me in touch with the Assistant Secretary of Illinois for DHS as well as two Aldermen to have conversation regarding the immigrant situation. I know that in Madison, they have taken in quite a few migrants. I'm not sure of the housing situation. I learned something about putting them up in a hotel or things of that nature. But there is funding in your, like, they're allocating all of their money into the city. But I was told that I could definitely have conversation about possibly saying the options for funding money into this community. I attended IML as well.
Madam Court, excuse me, I don't want to interrupt you. But there's a merger under Board members hat. There's an incident going on. So we're going to take the works that walk out to the block. And then finally finish your report. And we'll be praying for your sister because everything will be all right. Yeah.
So I attended the IML conference and I did attend the retail development, which I thought was really great. Also, they had a tour meeting in the beginning, which deals with wrongful acts or infringement of civil rights leading to legal liability for villagers. So I was interested because they named other municipalities. Hey, we weren't, we weren't one of the examples. But they did have some cases from different municipalities and I found that really insightful as well. But my favorite conference session was the future of lead service line replacement. I'm actually going to be pushing this packet when we do have our meetings regarding lead service line. It was really eye-opening. There were a lot of things that I learned as far as the different type of modes of trenching, using drill rods, ringers, and things of that nature. Also, the way that they do most of these jobs is really quite, it's not invasive, as invasive as I thought. The timing of it, it's very detailed. So I invite, I'm going to be, I have these available if anyone would like to review the packet. But this is a packet I'm definitely going to push. I was also really proud because the keynote speaker was actually the person who's working on our project, Jonathan Flowers. I was really impressed. He was really happy when he saw me in the room. He said it felt good to see a familiar face. So that really made me proud that I know we made the right choice in selecting Robinson Engineering for this. And a lot of the times when the state had, was receiving questions from the audience, they actually deferred to him. So he's the lead, the lead person for Robinson Engineering that deals with water service line replacement. So this is going to be available in village hall. But like I said, as we have more meetings, I'm going to be pushing this packet because it was extremely informational. The other thing I wanted to talk about, we did meet, we had several meetings with Paycom, every week several meetings, some of them I can't attend. We've had to learn sit in on them with implementation of the Paycom system. We're still on board to begin that process in October. Also, I had meetings with members of Antero also to clear with the striping on the streets. There's a total of twenty-three crosswalks and nineteen stop bars that are going to be re-stripped. The goal is to re-stripe all of the crosswalks and stop bars along the Black Hawk Avenue corridor from University Parkway on the Southway to St. Drive. So those are exhibits that are available also for anyone who would like to leave them. So we spoke with Brick, who's the traffic patrol company, about the water, the striping crew. We're going to make field assessments. They've already been out looking at the existing crosswalks. Some of them are non-existent. Basically, we're trying to determine right now if grinding is necessary to remove the existing diagonal markings on some of them. The reason for this is that some of the crosswalks are in better shape than others, but we want to refresh the whole corridor. The other thing is on September sixth, we had a home conference with the Attorney General's office regarding ICL. And it was, it was great. I thought it was good. One of the things that was discussed was the check, donation check of a hundred dollars that was unsolicited by ICL for the back-to-school event. I did inform the Attorney General and we are returning that money. So when you see that coming up on the bill one, that's for what it's for. I thought it was really insulting how much money that ICL generates, especially out of the assets of these residents. And the very little to nothing that they contribute to us. So she was grateful that we did point that out to her. One of the other things I wanted to mention was compliance. So they're moving to annual sampling and it was, it's because they've got two consecutive six-month water sampling compliance that which was below, yeah, six.
Six.
Six. And it was below the acceptable lead levels. So that's something that's out of our control. The Attorney General did share that with us. And we did ask questions such as where are they getting the water sampling from? And also
Those questions were taken from the residents?
Yes, and some of the residents
I gave her all the questions.
Trustee Karen did bring those questions up to the Attorney General. She also suggested that we tighten up our list of asks and things that we would like to see from ICL. I think the major one we should ask for is, I think it's really nice to have a pot or things like that. They get to fix these lead pipes. And the truth of the matter is, when I attended this meeting for the lead water, there's actual grants that they can apply for, but we can't make them apply. We can't apply on behalf of ICL. They have to apply on their own. And there's a, you know, certain amount that would be possibly forgivable, but it's up to ICL to make that movement be responsible. So some of those things we discussed with the Attorney General. Another thing I wanted to touch on was this past week, we had a meeting regarding Regal Farm with members of Fabex and Seek Design. It was literally Jason, Leila, Parel, Alejandra. Randall was on from Antero. So we discussed the walls communication, the project master plan, the vision, the project's confirmation, the project budget, the schedule, the existing conditions, the survey. Someone came out just this past, I think it was yesterday and today, looking at Regal Farm. Some of the kids busted out the windows again. So we have them, they were boarded up, but you know, this is an ongoing issue. So we're looking at getting that done. So they came in to basically take measurements. And we discussed things like the porch and clothing. There were a lot of elected officials there, leaders, including people and all of them from the city of Chicago. It was interesting. They discussed jobs, whatever skill level, the economic impact that the airport would have, the infrastructure improvements that would be sure to follow with this airport coming on, capital investments, building characteristics like who it was in the airport. Also, there was a lady there that I was really impressed with and she, she gave a really good report. And apparently she was the first who's over the airport for Miami's airport. And I thought it was really interesting. She said that no two airports are alike. So her name was Angela Gittens. It was really insightful. I'm going to follow up with her, but she talked about generating jobs, taxes, anything that she can think of, said ways into housing. And also, you know, that it's going to be serving as a cargo airport, a metropolitan airport commission. They also looked at Leaf River Falls and Bonniji, I believe, I might be pronouncing it wrong. Bonniji airports for comparison. And they couldn't give an exact timeline when it would start, you know, the phasing, but they said that the timeline is endless. And airlines do not draw the market. I thought that was interesting. So another thing I wanted to mention, I did have a meeting with Graystone, who was awarded the contract for the salt shed from Graystone, which Lawless and Graystone would discuss. We had initial meetings regarding the salt shed, things like demoing the current building that's there. Also having it to be completely flattened and leveled, what that would look like and entail. We're hoping to get the, this, this by the end of the year, before the end of the year, also weather permitting. So that's a job that I'm going to have to get with public works to make sure that we're able to facilitate that. Anything else I have to discuss? I think that's about it. Also, I wanted to say a special thank you to Matt Stacy. He resigned this past Friday. We wish him the best on his future endeavors and what that may be. So thank you.
All right. I'll, I'll make my report. Trustee Lewis, you have to sit. Bring it back, come on there.
Bring it back and I'll talk to the A.D.'s office. We need all the residents, if you want to get your water tested, please note the time, the date, the person that you talk to, when they pick up the water. We've set it out because the timing that we have from several residents that is taking a leak, it's a two leaks, a three leaks, hours of luck. You can call the one eight seven seven number to have your water tested. Just ask them that you get names and time. So this helps us and when we're going into the game, you will. Let me know if you guys need the number.
Just say, give the number, just say, just say.
I was testing the water.
No, independent, independent. Scott, you have numbers. You're behaving good.
Mr. Ed, the number is eight seven seven nine eight seven two seven eight two. Please call. What's the time, the person, the pickup, when you put it out, and when they return to pick up the water is just important information to us.
All right, trustee. Thank you. And I'll make my report. Breathe, starting on three, bringing back in off our manager Scott. The third airport is definitely real. It becomes now January the first of twenty twenty-four. If you know my contractors who are interested in admitting opportunities for contracting, the Illinois Department of Transportation is now taking our FQs as we speak. University Park will gain great opportunities if we make our moves right now. University Park is the last continually going south before we get to the Congo Airport and the first continually going north. There will be great opportunities for us to continue to grow. And with that airport and we make a few moves as a board, there's a possibility that our residents will be paying any property taxes. It's my goal, as I always have, with enough economic growth and development, we'll be able to rebate taxes back if we continue moving the course forward. So that's really great. And we get the opportunity to attend the IML. And I'm glad that trustee Fortune and Williams and those who are able to make it were able to stick to some of the sessions. Because now I think that some of our trustees are understanding the process of how we develop a retail corridor, which we all desire, so. So we're on the right track by creating the jobs, industry, warehouse, logistics, e-commerce. Our industrial department, it's just a matter of time before the restaurants and the hotels will come along. Because they realize that all these employees now are either supposed to go for breakfast, lunch, or supper, such as on economics of University Park. Also, the keynote speaker at IML opening session was political strategist with we all get opportunity to meet and see is Donna Brazil. She was outstanding and gave us a lot of key hints, points on how we can bring our community together. Because the whole thing, people, it's the turn to each other and not on each other. And we all win as a community. So those are some of the good things that happened. We talked about tips. But one of the things that we need to start acknowledging our community, when the village sends out communications, we need not just to send it out in English, we need to send it out in Espanol and in Spanish as well. January the first of twenty-three, our Spanish population was under ten percent. Right now, our Spanish population is closer to twenty percent. And these aren't migrants or immigrants or people of other, these are real home buyers in University Park. So we might as well get ready for the transition with EV and putting things in place for the transition. Uh, what else does it feel quick? And if I've got the migrants or whatever you want to describe it, I'm not against the humanitarian effort, but my problem is we've got home inspections and our homeless population has been suffering for the longest. So the urgency to deal with the other people is understandable, but let's take care of home first, then we can move on. I think we all have a good heart and want to make sure we do the best for people. But if we neglect our own home, how can we just outside and go do something else? So that's my challenge with the migrants as we get more involved and we get, they're getting to our community more. We'll have more discussions and think of innovative ways to ensure that we're doing the best that we can for our community. We're looking at nine X six, another three hundred acres on the west side of I-57th, the commercial and new housing market. So there's a lot going on in University Park. And I'm going to cut it short. And with that being said, is there a motion for a term? Move by trustee Lewis, set in by all in favor? Opposed? None. Thank you for the nice.